Good evening. Welcome to the City Council Meeting of June the 9th at 7:00 PM. Mr. Smith, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Ross, Mayor, the roll call.
Mr. Arnold.
Here.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Here.
Ms. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Koss.
Here.
Mr. Shamir.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Zuber.
Here.
Mayor Spetzl. Law Director Ebert.
Here.
Finance Director Crossy.
Here.
Public Works Director Liskovic.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor is on a mission down to West Virginia with 150 students, and they're building homes, and he will be returning next week. Mr. Liskovic is on vacation. Are there any comments about their absence here? Seeing none, they will be approved then. Thank you. Approve all the minutes, April 14, 2025. Everybody's had a chance to read the minutes? Any changes? Seeing none, then they will stand as published. Thank you. Any correspondence? Mrs. Ross, Mayor.
I don't have any correspondence to report. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Gentry?
I've received several pieces of correspondence from my residents in regards to Airbnbs and concern regarding the spread of Airbnbs, and there's one in particular that has 20 people that are allowed to stay there. They advertise it as sleeps 20. So there, I know that we have a meeting coming up this Wednesday to talk about short-term rentals. So I have mentioned that to them, but I did want to mention that I received those communications.
Thank you. If you can get a copy of the advertisements for the homes, that would be important for that meeting. Anybody else have any correspondence they want to share? Yes, Mr. Shamir.
I've received a number of phone calls with respect to the condition of the roads and the west winds and time schedule for when the repairs will start. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, okay. We're going to move on then to reports. The mayor's report, I'm going to be giving you some information in lieu of the mayor not being here. Going to remind everybody that the 2025 Big Tree Contest is still ongoing, and the deadline for the nominations is July the 25th at 4:30. If you go onto our website, there's a link that will take you to the Lorraine County Conservation District's Soil and Water website. That's where we will be applying, and you have an opportunity to win awards for the county and also locally. First place in the county is a $100 gift certificate. Second place is a $50 gift certificate. Third place is a $25 gift certificate. From Avon Lake, there'd be a gift certificate for an eight-inch ice cream cake from the Avon Lake Dairy Queen, and a 25 gift certificate from Fenix Ice Cream. That's first place. Second place is a $25 gift certificate from Parker's Grill Old School Pizza and Wings. And then third place is a $20 gift certificate from Sally Craze. We want to thank those businesses for supporting this effort. The next item that I wanted to speak about has to do with Engage Avon Lake. So we had an app that's called Engage Avon Lake. It is no longer supported, and we're recommending that everybody who might have downloaded it on their phones, please delete it. And in its place, you're going to turn to Report an Issue. You Spot It, We Got It. And this is a non-emergency number. Again, if you have an emergency, please dial 911. But again, it's called You Spot It, We Got It. It's on our website. Next, Mr. Shamir, will you be speaking about the deer survey?
Yes.
Okay, so I will not be speaking about that. Very good. And then Short-Term Rentals is coming up as an ad hoc committee at 6:00 PM this Wednesday here in the council chambers. Sunday, there's going to be a concert series, 15th, at Miller Road Park from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and it's free. There's food trucks. The food is available for purchase, of course. Bring your chairs, your blankets, and non-alcoholic drinks are welcome. All dogs need to be on leashes. There's no smoking or vaping. They wanted me to remind people. And that's all I have right now from the mayor's reports. Any questions, comments? Yes, sir. Mr. Zuber?
Could you announce who the band is on that?
If it's on the sheet, I definitely will. Music by Town Line 26, the country group.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further questions? If not, then we're going to go along with the council president's report. And what I want to share is that the CCM is going to be June the 16th here in these chambers at 7:00 PM. The next council meeting is going to be on the 2nd of July, and we have two more, okay? I'm sorry, it's on the 23rd. It's going to be June the 23rd. And then we have two, that's going to be the next to last before we go on to break. And then the other thing that I want to mention is that I've asked for an ad hoc committee to be formed of resident volunteers who will review our boards and our commissions to try to balance out the appointments so that they're not all by council or they're not all by the mayor, so it's a bit more balanced. And also, they will be looking at the end of terms so that there will be some carryovers, that there's some historic institutional knowledge carried from one group to another. And council members, you've been asked to provide us with a person's name. They do not have to be in your ward, but if you could give that name to Valerie by noon on Friday, it'd be greatly appreciated. And then during the months of July and August, if it takes two months, they will meet, and when we come back from break, they will present their recommendations to us. That's all I have for the council president's report. Now we're going to move along to the law director.
No reports, Madam President.
Thank you. And the finance director?
No report, other than we do have a couple of finance items on the agenda tonight that we'll be covering.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The public works director is not here this evening. Now we're going to go to standing committees. We're going to start with Buildings and Utilities, Ms. Gentry.
The Buildings and Utilities meeting this month will be held on Monday, June 16th at 6:00 PM in council chambers. We will, we have moved on, we're reporting out on the demolition ordinance tonight. So we'll start picking up occupancy requirements for the city. Many other cities in the area have occupancy requirements limits, and so we'll be picking up that in our next meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Gentry? All right, then. We're going to move along to Mr. Shamir with Communications, Environmental, and Recreational Programming.
I guess there has been a preliminary Parks and Rec Assessment Survey that's been conducted by the Parks and Rec Department. That is being reviewed currently and is going to be evaluated based on future projections and future plans. So that's the first run of a draft report that's been submitted, and there's been a lot of effort put in by the Parks and Rec team. The next issue is, there is a deer control survey that is ongoing until June 30th. It's online on the city website. It is, when you go onto the city website, you can just type in "deer survey" and it will be there. So if you have any comments, if you have any issues, that's a good venue to submit the information, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question. The study that is being done right now and the research from the recreational programming for all the parks, are they including what was done earlier with the Weiss Field designs?
So currently, what they have done is a baseline assessment of the park. So they have done walkthroughs. There has not been a evaluation of previous design, so that's the next.
Okay, because one of the comments that I'm receiving from residents is that as they're walking from Rusatar into the west winds, the trees that are along that pathway need to have some attention with mulching them. They just need some attention.
I have had similar discussions, and I've relayed the information.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any further questions for Mr. Shamir? Okay, we'll move on then to Economic Development, and Mr. Arnold.
Thank you. No report. Our next Economic Development Committee will be on June 18th at 6 o'clock.
Any questions for Mr. Arnold? Okay, we're going to move on to Finance. Mr. Zuber.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a finance committee meeting last week prior to the council meeting on the June the 2nd. We talked about several different items. First of all was the procurement policy. The finance director is revamping that procurement policy. It's hopeful that after the break, we'll have an update at that point in time on some of the changes that she wishes to make. We also had some discussion on the tax budget for next year. That is up for first reading. And that's the beginning of the budget process for the following year. We have to get that to the county by the 16th of July, I believe. So we will be passing it on second reading next week. That's how it was voted out of the committee. That basically tells the county why we need for them to collect the property taxes and other taxes they collect, and to show them what we're going to be spending it on. We had, we also brought up the fire station owners rep. I'm going to be talking to the mayor more about that. We have some budget adjustments. That's on for first reading and for passage. It was voted out of the committee to pass on suspension of the rule and to pass this evening. We have some transfers in regards to the Phase 5 project, I believe it's of Walker Road, which is in front of Aviant, that needs to be done. Some transferring on the Cal Dip and a couple other minor adjustments that the finance director has talked about. We had a brief conversation about the license plate fees. We look to present more on that at the next meeting. We also went over to the May financials. The income tax collection this year so far is up 3.3% above last year, which was a record year, over $18 million. We also had some discussion on the Audit Committee, updating and revamping of the Audit Committee to bring some citizens in for the Audit Committee, and rather than it being just the Finance Committee and a couple other members of the administration. So our next meeting will be the first Monday in July.
Thank you. Any questions or comments to Mr. Zuber on finance? All right, then we'll move along. Thank you, sir. We'll move along to Mr. Smith with Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President. Human Resources met tonight at 6:30 prior to the council meeting to discuss the administration's decision to hire Matthew Mahoney as the property maintenance specialist, and for the judge of the Avon Lake Municipal Court to hire Cheyenne Woods as the deputy clerk of court. In addition, we discussed the attempts to try and streamline some of the appointments of these folks, provided they're appointed within their job descriptions and within the pay ranges, to try and alleviate a lot of the over, what's the word I want to use, just the redoing of it and having to bring it to council. Council will be informed of all these appointments through the Human Resources Department, as well as through the mayor, which we will report on on a regular basis to council. But as long as these folks are within the proper guidelines, we, I see, and the committee agree with me that we see no issue with the administration appointing them. You have Civil Service appoints people. They also will appoint them, and will also continue to have, when the Civil Service approves, the officers of the Police and Fire to have the swearing-ins here at City Council. The other thing, I guess, I'll discuss that right now, is that for those of you out there, there is civil service job postings going on. You have applications that are due no later than this Friday, June 13th, at 4:30. The applications are for the engineering technical aid one, laborer in the public works, as well as a police officer. So now is a great time to come and get those applications, put those in, and the test will be Saturday?
Wednesday, June 18th.
I'm sorry, June 18th. I knew, I thought it was June 18th, yeah. On Wednesday, June 18th will be the test for those positions. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we also need to mention that council will be approving appointments to department heads. It's just that those that are not civil services or that are not department heads will then be up to the administration to hire. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Okay, then we will move along then to Mr. Koz, Public Safety and Health.
Thank you, Madam President. I have no formal report, other than noting that the next meeting of the Public Safety and Health Committee will be Tuesday, June the 17th. There's a different time set on that. 7:00 PM is when we're looking to hold that meeting. And I should have more information on the agenda for that at next week's collective committee meeting. The agenda will go out this Friday for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith has a question?
No, I don't. I just want to say thanks for the courtesy and moving that due to my prior commitment.
And also, I think everybody is appreciating, Mr. Koz, what you're doing with the e-bikes and getting the information out to the public. I know that I'm seeing a lot more young people with helmets on after that information came out. Okay?
There's more to come. So we're still, it's a long process to educate and make some tweaks here and there. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. Any more questions for Mr. Koz, comments? Okay, we're going to move along now to Public Service. We had a very lengthy meeting, June the 4th, and a lot of topics were discussed that are going to be brought up at the CCM. I'm just going to mention the topics to get through them. There's a request for, in our FQ, a request for qualifications for Country Club Bridge Design, and that passed 2 to 0. We were down one member. So there's just the two of us. Recommend award of the 2025 Crack Ceiling Program for specialized construction ink of Kaihoga Heights for a base bid along with the alternus at $62,750,000. Recommend authorizing the mayor and finance director to apply for, accept, and enter into a cooperative agreement for construction of the 2025 Water Bundle Project between Avon Lake Board and Municipal Utilities, doing business as Avon Lake Regional Water, the City of Avon Lake, and the Ohio Development Authority, and declaring that to be an emergency. There was a recommendation, another motion, these are all motions that passed, a recommendation that the resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission, OWPC, state capital improvement, and our local transportation improvement program, and to execute contracts as required, declaring an emergency. We do this every year, so we can participate, we can receive grants for our road work. Recommend awarding Terminal Ready Mix the contract for providing concrete for 2025 to Public Works for Class C. Recommend awarding Westview Concrete Corp. the contract for providing concrete for 2025 to Public Works for LSM, MS, and FS Mix. Recommend awarding Wholesome Quarries, New York, the aggregate contract for 2025 to Public Works for Number 8 Limestone. Recommend awarding Area Aggregates LLC the aggregate contract for 2025 to Public Works for Number 1, Number 57, Number 10, Number 304, and Number 411 Limestone. And then recommend awarding Kokosing Materials, Inc., the asphalt patching material contract for 2025 to Public Works for Number 301 and Number 448. Mr. Koz was not in attendance due to an family emergency, and Mr. Arnold could not vote on the following items due to a conflict, but they will be brought to the CCM, and the following three will be discussed at that point in time. I just want to give everybody a heads up. Recommend awarding inspection contract administration to Bramhall for Walker Road Phase 5. Recommend awarding Design Services and Bid Assistance to Bramhall for Walker Road Phase 6. Recommend awarding Design Services and Bid Assistance for the 2026 Road Program. And that was the end of the meeting. None of those items are on tonight's agenda, but I did want to bring you up to date with what's coming on at the CCM. Are there any questions on any of these topics or comments at this point? Okay, seeing none, we will move along then to Mr. Smith with the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Madam President. On Tuesday, June 3rd, Planning Commission did meet. They had four items on the agenda. One was the approval. They approved a site plan for construction of a new corporate office on Pinot Parkway on the Commerce Parkway offshoot of it, which is just to the west of where the current, it's just a few blocks west of 83. And it's the, they're going, it's Dr. Chris Tomchek, founder and CEO of Health Source Chiropractic LLC and Apex Longevity, and the site plan was approved for a 8, 8,500 or so square-foot office building. So that was approved. Second on the agenda, and this was relatively interesting, this has to do with the approval of a preliminary plan for Legacy Point Limited, COP Construction, Major Subdivision Preliminary Plan. This is for a site that is parallel to the Golf Course Number 12, along with being parallel, it reaches over to Wildberry. It was the culmination of years of purchasing the old 40- and 50-foot lots, and that was approved. There were some contingencies that were approved within that from, that were noted in Kelly Laporte's notice, and that was, and all of the requests that she had on that were agreed to by the developer, and that was to clarify and confirm street frontages for lots on Cortland, Turnberry, Knickerbocker, Valhalla, and Spyglass, that the Spyglass, where Spyglass is going to have a cul-de-sac at the end down near the railroad tracks, that was going to be maintained by the homeowners' association. They wanted specific sites for where the mailboxes were going to go, because all the mailboxes will be at the entry. There are two, there's one lot that they have, but there was one lot that they didn't have, and it's on, and it happens to be the lot right at the entrance to the subdivision that they're going to put the mailboxes on. But the one lot that does remain right there is still buildable, so we'll see what happens, whether someone actually decides to build there once all the improvements are in. There was some concern about corner property lines being rounded, and the radius being 65 feet at the cul-de-sac of Spyglass Court. And they had listed down there to try and save some of the trees, some dual storm laterals in the backyards, but the department heads and the engineer requested that they install individual storm sort of laterals on these properties, and so that's what they're going to do. But, so that's, if you're golfing at Legacy, or if you're at Wildberry, and there's going to be a bunch of the trees along, particularly Wildberry, this apparently was something that was in play at some point earlier around the time of COVID, and got put back on, got put on the back burner. The next item was the approval of the plat for Sand Ridge Run Subdivision, which you all know is on 83. It's the plat that comes after all of the other things, all the other preliminary plans, and the improvement plans have been approved. The plat was approved there, and they asked us, the next one was a plat as well, and they asked us, asked me in particular for council's approval tonight as an emergency, and I said, "Well, what I thought would be best is for us to discuss it here tonight, let everybody know about it, let everybody be aware of it." We have it then at the CCM, and then I said I would put it forth at the next meeting as a emergency measure for passage, so that those lots can start being divided up and recorded with the county. And that's for the Sand Ridge Subdivision. And the last one was Polty Homes for the Major Subdivision Final Approval for Portside Subdivision along Rock Harbor and Southport Drive, which is the area that's been in much discussion, where the connector will be to Hanford Boulevard. And that also was approved at that, for the submission of those, of the plat for that. And again, the plat would be, is to be discussed here tonight, let everybody know that it's coming, and that we can discuss it at the CCM, and then put it forth for emergency passage at our next meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Smith on any of those items? I know that on the one behind Wildberry and the Golf Course, there's a lot of original paper streets, Cortland and Knickerbocker and Spruce that need to be vacated?
Well, yes, they will. There is going to be some vacations that, that come forward to council. Again, I said that was just, that was all very interesting in terms of, you know, how they put all the plans together, and a lot less houses are going to go in there once we vacate those streets. And there was some discussion about, one of the vacated streets goes right down through the middle of the project, but, you know, we're going to have other right of way around the, the outside of it. So, yes, there will, but not all of them are being vacated in all spots. And one, one that is going to be vacated is that there's, one of the streets happens to run along the back of Wildberry, and that one's going to be vacated to Wildberry and to COP Development.
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much, very detailed. The mayor usually gives the zoning boards reports, and what we have before us came from Austin Page, and it was an area variance, it was granted five to zero for a property at 32621 Bell Road, general development standards, fences, and walls in a residential Any questions on that one? Okay, then we'll move along to Parks and Rec. Mr. Shamir?
Nothing to report. I just, the discussion we had with, with respect to the, the assessment is the only thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other special committees? Yes, sir.
No report, but just, it's been talked about tonight already, but there'll be a STR, Short Term Rental ad hoc committee on June 11th at 6:00 PM, which is this coming Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think that we really want the residents here for and against, so we can hear your experiences. The state's gotten involved with some possible legislation. It'll be interesting to find out what has passed and what hasn't with the state. Thank you. With the tree commission, we're going to be meeting at a different date than we normally meet. It'll be June the 26th this time. It's going to be just an odd date for us, at 6:00 PM, and we're going to be going over one topic only, and we're going to be looking at a possible Division of Forestry grant to see if we can apply for it, if, if there is enough information that we can gather in, in four weeks to put it together. I know that Kelly LaRosa is going to be helping us with this particular project. She's very good at, at writing grants. Okay? Anything else? Any questions? All right, seeing none. Now we're going to go into audience participation, and anything that's on tonight's agenda, you can come forward for three minutes to say your name and see that you're from.
Paul Orlovsky, Hanford Boulevard, Avon Lake. You're doing the traffic study, and you've noticed quite a few flaws in how this is being conducted. My neighbors and I continue to have grave concerns about how the count was actually conducted. An example, Saturday, May 31st was the date of the 15,0425 dollar one-time Saturday morning, Saturday traffic count. There were no cameras at Lear and Hanford, one of the main points of contention, on a main day, why not? There were, there were two cameras on Lear that day, and, and Walker, another at Liberty Rose and Lear, and as I mentioned, none at Hanford. There was one at Dorchester. Fast forward a week, this takes, I was very shocked, to be honest with you, to see cameras reinstalled on Friday the 6th, last Friday, at Liberty Rose and Hanford, and also at Liberty Rose and Lear, Hanford and Lear. Why? School was out. This was outside the agreement with Trans Systems. Were they doing a make-good for not having the cameras there on Hanford the previous Saturday when they actually should have been there? Were they doing, oh, by the way, they were taking them down this morning. Given these observations and others about counts being done on various days and not all at once, I believe, and I think a lot of my neighbors that I talk to, believe that council should argue that the vendor has breached the contract with the city, that they haven't done what you were paying them to do, and paying a lot of money to do. At this point, as I pointed out in a letter to each of you last month, they failed to ensure that they had the necessary number of cameras to do the count all at once, and therefore will fail to provide accurate and useful data for the TIA. How can you guys possibly be expected to make good decisions when you're given, solid decisions when you're given flawed data? The vendor should remedy this arguable breach by conducting the traffic count correctly in the fall, when school is back in session, at no additional cost to the city, and you guys should demand that. This was not done correctly. This seems to be a viable solution that would allow council to get valid data for, avoid making decisions based on flawed data, and thus also not make any mistakes. On a different topic, the bombshell last meeting from the mayor of possible use of a chain at Hanford in the Polte development between the two, where did that come from? It's never been mentioned in any discussion, and certainly a gate is mandated in the MOU. You have $15,000 from Polte and certainly can afford a gate that is more aligned with the surrounding upscale developments. A chain is not a gate. Wouldn't a chain actually force safety forces if there's an emergency to stop, unlock the thing, let it drop? It would, that's got to be way, way slower than pressing a button on a remote, sailing through a gate. Quickly on the topic of Polte, my neighbors and I entered this months-long discussion, thinking that it was us versus Polte. We were wrong, very wrong. Polte put up gate money, has worked long hours with homeowner Mike Dunford in planning a long and large mound with trees on top to protect views for us and for their homeowners. I really want to be wrong when I say this, but I'm beginning to think we have a new enemy. I'll bite my tongue for now, and through the chair apologize to Polte.
Thank you. I would like to address Mr. Orlovsky. I have an email here from June the 2nd, from Mr. Mayor before he left town, and I'd like to read it, so that it's part of the record and everybody can, can know. Traffic study update, and this came in, it says, "Attached is an updated schedule to reflect a couple of equipment failures that occurred in the field. Unfortunately, these things can happen periodically due to weather, batteries, et cetera, according to Aaron Grillot, Grilliot of Trans Systems. You will see the additional counts for the three intersection locations will occur this week, along with the scheduled Saturday count on six intersections." And this, this is dated again, June the 2nd, okay? And I'm going to go down, I'm going, I have a copy of it here, and I am going to make note to send it to you, and you can disperse it to your homeowners. Okay?
Madam President, point of order. That topic was not on the agenda tonight. That really should have, shouldn't that have come up at the end of this meeting? I don't see it on the agenda.
You're correct. It should have. Thank you. Thank you for the correction, sir.
Thank you.
We will send this to Paul. Okay. 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 Anybody else want to talk for three minutes on a topic that's on the agenda?
I believe Mr. Smith referenced the plat.
Do you want to come over here?
I just wanted to be sure that I could talk about this.
If it's on the agenda legislatively.
Okay. Mr. Smith mentioned the connection.
Yeah, it was in my report, but it's not on the agenda for any action.
It's not on the agenda. As soon as we come.
It will be next Monday in the collective committee meeting, and the plat for that area will be on the agenda with following council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Once we're done with our legislation, another, another session for public.
Right, at the end of the meeting, sir. Right. Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward on a topic that is on the agenda?
I'm Diane Culver. I live on James Circle, and I am here for Airbnb.
That's not on tonight's agenda, but.
Amy, you brought it up.
It was her report, it was her report, but we're talking legislatively. Stay with us, she could still talk about it at the end of the meeting. Right now it's the legislation. Okay. Okay. This is why council's looking at changing the 220 to make it easier. Okay, anybody else want to talk on tonight's agenda?
William Zimmerman. That was actually going to be my first question, was, it wasn't on the agenda, so why are we discussing it? Anyhow, so the things I'd like to talk about is 25-112, ordinance enacting codified ordinance chapter about demolitions. Starting point, back in the day, EAB, EAAB, had passed out of their committee, a resolution to get rid of all, no, I, I have to say this properly. From what I understand, they had passed a resolution to stop all implosions. Is that correct? They, they initially had done that, so there wouldn't be demolition. A moratorium was the word I was looking for, and it went to Amy's committee and was voted down, never made it out of the committee. I thought that was an important statement to make, because if I recall correctly, Amy held the last vote. So, to go now another 10 months to finally get a demolition ordinance, I believe shows that the law director did nothing to help this. He dragged his feet, he left her out to dry, since she was a freshman on council, didn't know the procedures and stuff, just so you guys would all let it just die, so ALERG wouldn't be offended or affected. I believe that that was improperly done. So the other issue I have about tonight is the 2020 council, 25-116. Again, I believe this is nothing more than a retribution towards Gerald Phillips and myself, because we come to every meeting, because we get up and speak every meeting, and you don't like what we say. So this is nothing more than retaliation, trying to change the rules, to limit our speaking, change the order in which we speak. We were supposed to have another meeting to talk about it, and instead you bring it up at the CCM this past week, and nobody here would open their mouth about anything on camera. In the meeting, we had open discussions and, and talk about it. Just more corruption in the city of Avon Lake by those who are in power.
Anybody else want to come forward on an item on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, then we will go forward with our legislation. First is third reading. Mrs. Rossmeyer, and read by title only, ordinance number 25-98.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a personal services agreement with Simve Systems LLC for enterprise cyber risk management services, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes, this is the third reading of this ordinance, and the ordinance is to address the city's need for cybersecurity expertise to further ensure and secure operations of the city departments and protect sensitive information.
Mr. Shamir, I need a motion.
I move, I move to, I move to pass for the passage of this ordinance, ordinance number 25-98.
Thank you, and then your discussion with what you just had.
Exactly.
Very good. Anyone else for the discussion? Okay, Mrs. Rossmeyer, the role.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Ordinance number, we're into second readings now. Ordinance number 25-109. Mrs. Rossmeyer, and read by title only.
An ordinance amended planning and zoning code sections 1214, 1224, 1226, 1234, and 1236.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, this is the second reading of ordinance number 25-109. It's in the packet. The changes are those that were recommended by city staff and approved by Planning Commission, and we'll see those on a third reading in two weeks.
Thank you. Any comments? Ms. Gentry?
I believe step eight, section A, needs to add, the last, the last section after the final plat, I believe, or improvement plan, needs to be added when they're submitted to determine, or determined to be complete.
Could you repeat that again, please?
So the Planning Commission shall review the final plat or improvement plan that's there in, at its next regularly scheduled meeting, or at a special meeting after the final plat, I think we need to add, or improvement plan is submitted and determined to be complete.
Where, where are you?
I'm in step eight, section A, at the very bottom of the page.
Section eight?
Page two.
Page two, very bottom, 88.
It's of the ordinance, page two of the ordinance.
I don't believe that the improvement, I think part of the, the problem that we were having when I was on, on planning, was the improvement plan and the final plat were being confused. So they wanted to differentiate between the improvement plan and the final plat. Is that correct, Mr. Smith?
I still haven't found where she's talking.
Do, section number two.
Okay.
Step eight. On my papers at the bottom of the page, the first page.
Section number two, okay, step eight, that's on page one, not page two. Okay.
Yeah, A.
Sorry.
And then she wants to add or improvement plan after the comma, after the second comma, where it says after the final plat or improvement plan. Is that correct, Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
And, and I believe that you don't want that there, because aren't they trying to differentiate the final plat from the improvement plan, or do you want it there?
Yeah, I think they do want it there, because the title of step eight is the final plat or improvement plan by Planning Commission, and then section A says the final plat or improvement plan.
And then further down, you want to add it again, is what her question is.
There, it's, it's mentioned twice right there. Where's the further down that it's mentioned?
It's an A. You have to flip the page.
For us, it's not.
Oh, I, okay. After the final plat is submitted, or improvement plan is submitted? All right, I'll, I'll take that to Kelly and see what she has to say about that.
Okay, so you're, you're going to take it back to Kelly LaRosa?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So it says, or at a special meeting, comma, after the final plat, and the question is, should we add or improvement plan?
Again, yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we will then move on. Now we're going to go to first reading, ordinance number 25-112. Ms. Rossmeyer, please read by title only.
An ordinance enacted in codified ordinance chapter 1470, demolition.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes, this ordinance is the demolition ordinance that we, we, that is, includes requirements for permits and environmental safeguards, insurance and bonding, and demolition site restoration to ensure demolition activities do not pose a risk to neighboring properties, residents, or the environment. So this defines the process, you'll, the, the starting point of this for any, any, any demolition in, in the city would be to submit an application for demolition, and at that point, they will, the city would then review the, the requirements of the dump, what's being demolished, and determine whether or not these additional site map, method of demolition, building, building service, fire protection details, hazardous material plan, air quality monitoring plan, dust mitigation, noise and vibration plans, base soil sampling plan, air dispersion modeling and risk assessment, phase one environmental assessment, pest mitigation and elimination plan, site cleanup plan and restoration plan. At that initial meeting with the building department and the, the, I forget what the term is for that group, the department heads, they would then review the application and determine which of those are required for the specific demolition site, as we understand that each site will be different, and the requirements would need, need to be determined accordingly. So there's also insurance requirements, bonding requirements, and, and also the, the standards with which the, the demolition needs to be followed. And then we have the penalty phase, $150 for each offense for not. Um, and then we have, uh, the penalty phase, um, a hundred and fifty dollars for each offense for not, um, not meeting the criteria, each offense, each day would be a continuance of the, and, uh, would be a continuance of violation, would be considered a separate offense, so it would stack up.
And could you go into the, um, number seven, basement swimming pools, vault spaces?
Yes, so this, the standards also include how to, um, the requirements for basement swimming pools, vault spaces, and cesspools, for this, liners should be cut out and removed, floors shall be broken up for proper drainage, walls shall be reduced to two feet below existing ground level, sanitary and storm sewers and drains, inlet pipes shall be plugged at the outlet or discharge point with concrete.
Thank you, a lot of work that you have there that you've done. The law director would like to comment.
I'd like all the comments, Mr. Gentry knows, there's been several, several, many drafts of this and discussions in my office, almost on a daily basis for the thing, so regardless of what was discussed said earlier, there's been a lot of discussion back and forth, all good discussion, as far as the realities of it, you know, the procedure and the time period for this to go through. So, Ms. Gentry did a real job, but there's a lot of discussions, meetings in my office and everything else concerning this. Thank you.
This will probably be a template that other cities are going to be using, Ms. Gentry. Mr. Shamir, your hands up?
Yes, I do have a comment on the site cleanup plan, and, uh,
Which is where, on which page?
Page four, item number twelve.
Thank you.
Where it says the applicant shall clean up demolition site, it should actually say the applicant shall clean up locations outside the demolition site, to the levels of collected superficial samples pre-demolition. This sample shall be collected from the upper six inches, so the demolition site is going to be contaminated. We're sampling outside of the demolition site to ensure that anything that migrates off-site, we know the baseline, and then we can clean up to that level, or at least have the, the con, the, the company that's doing the implosion clean up outside of that lim, outside of the fence boundary to the levels that it was, it was previously.
Okay, and just repeat one more time, so we have it.
So, it says the applicant.
cleanup plan, I have it here.
Okay, it says the applicant shall clean up.
The demolition?
Locations outside the demolition site.
Okay.
And the rest remains the same.
I would suggest that it should also be the demolition site.
Well, demolition site is going to be, it's going to have to be remediated.
Right.
But it's the, it's the locations outside the fa, boundary that we are worried about.
Yep.
So, Mr. Shamir, um, let me ask a question here. Could it state, the applicant shall clean up the demolition site and the locations outside of the demolition site? Therefore, you're covering both?
Well, no, we're collecting soil samples outside the boundary, not inside the boundary.
Okay.
This is specific to the, to the area outside the boundary.
Thank you, sir, thank you for your addition. Um, you have it written down, it will be included, anybody else? This is why we take our time, right? But again, um, Ms. Gentry, you did a phenomenal job on this, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, I think, um, we probably need clarification in the base soil sampling plan to state areas outside of the demolition site, that's not clear in the dump, in the ordinance.
Will you write that up and send it over to?
I will, yes.
Um, that, Ms. Rossmarin?
Yep.
Thank you, did everybody understand what she just said? Could you repeat it again, louder?
So, number eight was baseline soil sampling plan, it does not specify that that is locations outside of the demolition site, which is what Mr. Shamir was referring to. So, I think if we clear that up as well, that'll make it much tighter.
Just send it to Ms. Rossmarin if you could, tonight or in the morning. Mr. Arnold.
Yeah, I just had a question for Mr. Shamir.
Mr. Shamir.
What is the condition of outside, like how far, is there a radius, or?
That is a function of your air dispersion modeling. When you do your air dispersion modeling, you then identify locations, locations where you would then sample. And, uh, and that is effectively what you're going to look at and measure post-implosion.
Should we add that in there as well, then, the air dispersing modeling?
Well, that information, I mean, if you go back to the first, very first revision of this document that was put in, what I would call the Chicago document, that's what it's, that's specifically stated in there. So, it is, and that version, that both, it says six inches, it says outside the demolition boundary, and, uh, the sampling is a, is a function of air dispersion modeling and your phase one assessment.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Mr. Shamir, I have a question, um, on page three. Um, underneath the hazardous materials plan, where it says air quality monitoring plan, number five, it says pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, chapter three, seven, four, five. Because we listed there, would that be enough to flag it, if this was something that, that would pertain to it, versus taking down my garage, for example?
So, number five and number nine are two different things.
Okay.
Uh, and, and the reference to where you would do sampling is based on results of the air dispersion modeling, number nine.
So, by having it here, that's all we need?
Well, yeah, that's, I mean.
Because you don't need it for my garage that's coming down, for example.
No, 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 this is, this is specifically for an implosion.
I understand.
And, and that's it.
Because this is a very broad, um, document that could be used for a lot of different types of demolition, correct?
Yes, so at that initial meeting.
With the DRE.
Which of these would be required?
Okay, very good. Any other comments? Okay, we're going to move along then, thank you. Again, ordinance number twenty-five one one three, uh, Mrs. Rossmarin, by title only.
An ordinance amending codified ordinance chapter fourteen thirty-eight, licensing of contractors defined, section fourteen thirty-eight, zero point zero one, contractor defined, defined, and codified ordinance, chapter fourteen sixty-eight, unsafe buildings.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes, so these two, um, modifications of our existing ordinances were, um, in collaboration with the, uh, the demolition ordinance, site changes that were needed to be made. As part of, part of the contractor definition, we added persons or entities who are involved in demolition of buildings in whole or in part, in accordance with chapter fourteen seventy, are subject to the requirements stated therein. That was for fourteen thirty-eight oh one, the contractor def, defined, and then, um, in fourteen sixty-eight ten, demolition process, we added, all demolitions shall comply with chapter fourteen seventy of the codified ordinance.
Very good, anybody else have a comment on this particular one? And, Ms. Gentry, again, you're going to have three readings on these?
Three readings on both.
Okay. Very good. Okay, we're going to move along then to ordinance number twenty-five dash one one four, uh, Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-five dash nineteen R two, appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-five and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber.
I move for the suspension of the council rule required in three readings.
Mrs. Rossmarin.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh. Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Zuber.
I move for passage of ordinance number twenty-five one fourteen.
In discussion.
As I stated in my report, this is, um, continued appropriations, uh, moving some different monies around, adding some appropriations, as I said, six hundred thousand dollars for the phase five, that includes some stormwater work that needs to be done in that area, and also, um, the other main one is one point one million dollars being reimbursed, uh, from the, uh, capital fund, uh, and in regards to the CALDIP funding uh, for the CALDIP phase two.
Thank you, any comments on this from anyone? Yes, or Mr. Shamir?
I do have, uh, a question. Uh, is the five hundred and ninety-one thousand eight hundred and five, uh, and the three new awards to Bramhall that are going to be discussed next week, is that part of the amendment, or is that part of the existing budget? I just need to.
It's not part of this amendment.
It was an existing budget.
For the, you're talking about for the?
That's for the design services.
Right, no, that, that's, that is not in the budget. That particular part I did, if, I think you were at the meeting last week, and we had talked about it. I had met with the finance director on that to look at trying to get that addition, try and find out how much money we had in the, uh, capital fund in order to fund that additional money that we need to do for the design work for the, uh, streets that are on the list that we have already done the borings for. And, and, so, and I, and I talked about, I think in one of my reports, either the last month or the month before, in that the estimate, when I talked to Mr. Howard, uh, he had already looked at some different things when he put together the estimates, and, and he said it would be around, uh, five hundred thousand dollars, it turned out to be only four hundred and forty, I think.
Four thirty-four.
Right, right, so that, we'll have discussion about that, and it, if, and if it is passed by council, then we would have to appropriate that, uh, money in the capital funds. Because there's, in my discussions with the finance director, she, we had sat down, and she had broken it out to money that we had left in that fund, which was about one point seven million dollars.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, um, at this point in time, we are going to have, um, you have a motion on the floor, so we're going to have our vote. You have a motion, Mr. Zuber? For suspension of the rule, right? And now you're going to have a motion?
Yeah, I move for passage, I believe.
Thank you, Mrs. Rossmarin?
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. And now, we're going to go on to resolution number two-five dash one one five, Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
A resolution adopted and declaring the twenty twenty-six tax budget and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber.
I move the first reading of resolution number twenty-five one fifteen.
In discussion.
As I stated in my, uh, finance committee report, this is the first process of the, uh, budgeting process for next year. Uh, this is the tax budget, would have to be to the county by the middle of next month. So, we're going to be asking for passage in two weeks on a suspension of the rule, so that she can get this down to them, because if we win it, she'd have one day to get it there, we don't want a next-day issue with that, so.
Any other comments? Okay, so this will be coming up in two weeks, then. Okay, then ordinance number twenty-five dash one one six, Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance amending codified ordinance chapter two twenty, council.
Thank you, and I'm the sponsor of this one, this is the first reading, we're going to have three readings of it. And, this is underneath the administrative code, and council is looking at how we're going to be changing the administrative code, um, to not only bring it up to date with some of the language, but also for the residents that would like to speak, they don't have to wait to the very end to speak on any topic, we're putting it at the very beginning of our, of our meetings, and they can speak on any topic for five minutes. So, um, the changes that occur, I'm going to go through it very quickly here. First, we start with meetings, um, we list the meetings and when we're going to have them. So, in December, there is a, um, calendar that lists all the meetings for the year. And whenever there's a holiday, it talks about how we're going to reschedule for the same time on a date as scheduled, selected by the majority vote of the members of council that occurs within seven days or after the date the meeting would have been held for, but for such holiday. And what you're going to notice in these changes is that instead of just saying the word council, we're saying the members of council. So, I'm not going to repeat each time we say the members of council, because it's simply a typo. The next thing is, is that the written record of the items covered and discussed at a regular and special meeting shall be kept by the clerk of council. Then we go into special meetings, and it talks about how those take place. Then we go into a collective committee meeting, it talks about how collective committee meeting takes place. We go into work sessions, it talks about how a work session takes place. Then we go on to an executive session, it talks about how an executive session will take place. And the main thing that's been added is as follows. Persons who are not members of council may only attend an executive session if invited by members of council. Information discussed at executive sessions shall not be disclosed without consent of council. Then we go into what is a quorum. And then we turn the page, we go down to the powers and the duties of council, it talks about the council president, and the changes are that, um, in looking at the board of elections and their dates of when they certify the general elections, we needed to bring this part up to date, so it reads as follows. Not later than seven days after the certification of general election results by the board of elections, the presiding council president shall convene a meeting of the council-elect. The sole purpose of this meeting shall be to elect the council president and the president pro temp for the new upcoming term. And then we go down further, and we talk about the standing committees and the new names that we have for them. Uh, Buildings and Utilities is a committee that, that we have, is relatively new. Mr. Shamir shares the Communications and Technology. Again, it's not digital media, so we brought that one up to date. And then we go over to the Economic Development, and the name of the department is Community Development Department. We brought that up to date. And then we go down to Public Service, and we, um, put down, uh, to make it easier to read the topic of this, of the paragraph, for example, referrals to committee, period, then it talks about the referrals. Then oversight of runaway infrastructure, then it talks about that. Oversight of public services and facilities, then it talks about that. And then it talks about the department review, the committee shall review and monitor the objectives and goals of the Community Development Department, Engineering Department, and Public Works Department. Talks about the property review, the committee shall oversee matters relating to property inspection and enforcement of building and maintenance codes. We talk about the arts and humanities of the infrastructure and facilities. The committee shall be responsible for matters related to the arts humanities as they pertain to infrastructure and city facilities. And then we go down to the committee minutes, and it's very clear, it says, a written record of the topics discussed at the committee meeting shall be maintained by the clerk of council. And then we go down to the agenda, and the order of the agenda. And it talks about the order of the business at a council meeting. And what we have done is we have put, um, speaking from residents in the front end versus having to wait to the very end. And I shall read it, it says, public input, each member of the audience wishing to speak shall be permitted to speak for up to five minutes on any topic. Additional time not to exceed five additional minutes may be granted by a two-thirds vote of the members of the council present. Every speaker shall address the presiding officer and refrain from personal attacks in decorous language and becoming boisterous. And then we talk about the rest of the meeting and how it takes place, we talk about the adjournment, we talk about the rules of the floor of the debate, we talk about, um, there will be no interruption, the only interruption would be a point of order, as you saw this evening, when Mr. Cos reminded me that the item that was being spoken about was not legislative on our agenda. And then it talks about the privilege of the sponsor. Um, we have always had the sponsor be the first to speak on his or her topic and be the last, but we never really called it out as privilege of the sponsor, we thought it would be clearer when people read the code to have it state privilege of the sponsor. And then we have the record of the debate, and again, the council clerk, um, shall record in the official minutes, a synopsis of the discussion of any matter that is formally presented before council. If any member of council requests that, a complete written statement be included in the minutes, and the requesting member provides the full written text of the statement, the clerk of council shall include the statement in its entirety in the official motions. And then we go down to, um, the motions, the three readings. And we specifically speak about the regular council meeting again, and, which you're going to see at this point from page fourteen throughout. Yes, sir.
You said that you were going to be brief in speaking on the?
I am, I'm not saying all of it.
Okay, I know, but you've been speaking for six minutes.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Um, one thing that it says here under audience, participation, public input, is that for the regular council meeting, for the C- the regular council meeting, for the CCM, for the specials, for the work sessions, it lays out that there will be information given to the public at least seventy-two hours before the meeting of, there will be a meeting. It states that there will be a record that will be taken. Okay. And then we move on to the very end, and the very end talks about the warrants. Okay. Is there any discussion from any of my council members on this one? Any further discussion? Mr. Koz?
Yeah, I have a question.
Thank you, sir.
If everybody could turn to page ten?
Ten?
Ten, yes.
Okay, just a moment. Okay, Mr. Koz?
And section F, as in Frank, where it says legislation, this is under the, the order of the council. It says, legislation required for the appointment to office, administration of the oaths of office, and issuance of ceremonial proclamations to be enacted. Earlier tonight at the HR committee, we discussed a streamlined process, which was discussed in the report by Mr. Smith, on not having to have legislation for all of these hires, but we did talk about keeping police and fire oaths of office as a part of the duties here for city council, that we hold those here. Is the language in F supportive of continuing to do those? I don't, it's not really an oath of office for police and fire, do we need to add something in there to include that, or is what we have there fine?
I'm going to turn it over to the law director if I could.
I think it's fine. The oath of office, obviously, you have for the police and the fire, it's always done here. The issue is, are, is what's legislative versus administrative? And, you know, appointments to office as required under directors for a charter, for instance, is done by, to council. But anything other than that is through the administration, not through councilmatic action. So I don't believe this changes that in any form or fashion.
Okay, yeah.
It protects it.
Yeah, and, and just, my confusion was, our police and fire, is that appointment, that swearing in, does that count as a oath of office?
Yes.
So you're, okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Koz, the second oath of office, are all the elected officials? When we, just right after our election, before we start again, there's another oath of office. Thank you. Good point. Anybody else? Okay, seeing, yes, Mr. Shamir, go ahead.
I do have a question with respect, it's on page fifteen. It's section, it's B two, and if we come down, it's actually B six. Participation of consultants and invited guests, consultants to council, and invited guests may present information and may be called upon to respond to questions from members of council. What exactly, I mean, how do we define invited guest, consultants to council? Are these consultants, advisors that have been hired? I mean, that is not defined anywhere when I go through and, and look.
I think that there's different levels of it. So for example, if we could go back over the past year, we had a master gardener come here and speak to us about the lantern fly. The master gardener, gardener was the consultant about the master fly. They talked about the poisonous hemlock. When we have Mr. Todd Davis here, he's a consultant. When we have Bernard Ockner here, when we have Verdantis, those are types of the consultants. We also have, as a consultant, CRS, when they're coming here for their particular program. So there's, I'm going to turn this over to the law director as, for, for the discussion.
It's, it's pretty general, but like you had, if you had someone here talking about historical society, and someone's in the audience whose memory, so I'd like to have so-and-so speak on this, because he's, the person has been there for a number of years. That would be a guest that's, you ask, information may help you in some, explaining something that's before council. But normally, it's going to be a consultant concerning someone the city has hired, or who is advising, even the consultant, or could be invited guest, could be the division of regional water, when they're here, and you've got a question concerning the property they're acquiring, or something like that. So it's general from that standpoint.
And if I could continue, for example, when we have Mr. Adams here from the Health Department, he's a consultant, and he comes in from the Health Department. We have the Village Project here, that's another consultant.
Metro Parks.
Metro Parks would be another one, sure. Anybody else? Sometimes we might even have the auditor.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, sir. Anybody else? These are good questions, very, very good. So you can see, there's a lot in here. It's not just about public discourse. Okay, we're at that point in time, when there can be public input on any topic for five minutes, just come forward, and if you could give us your name and the city that you are from. Now you may come up. Thank you. We didn't want you tripping over the plant, we just saw it move there.
Hi, I'm Diane Culver, I live on James Circle. I am here about the Airbnb. We had an individual, he bought a house next door. Oh, it's for my father-in-law. Well, guess what? It's turned to an R, it's turned to an Airbnb. The people next to them, a young couple, they just moved in, they haven't been there a month. They got a three-year-old and an infant, and guess what? There's a big party, graduation party. That house is supposed to be, has, on the form, for twenty people. You know what kind of party and trash they had? These people are now selling their house. And you know what? Think about, you know, and it's, if this keeps going around, our value of our house is going to go down, because who wants to be next to an Airbnb and there's parties? It's not right to that person. And then the guy has the audacity to do it with these people, and say, I will buy your house for you and give over $20,000 more than the value. Come on, he doesn't need that many houses. The last thing I have to say about that, is think about the future. Right now, BBC has made the comment that we've got drugs in schools, and kids have drugs, all right? And out of all that we have, out of the US, Avon Lake was picked as an example of it. So we've got a drug problem. Okay, we've got a superintendent saying, well, well-to-do community, man, we can afford a new school, you mean this and that, let's advertise that. You put drugs, you put money together, who are you going to invite for these houses? It's going to lead up to you for your discussion. But look at Mayfield Heights, Friday, they had on TV, they're, they got together as a city, and they put, they made a vote, legislation on how legal it was, that, sure, they'll have an Airbnb, but they've got to run it for six months to discourage people, so they don't come and do it. So I hope to God, you know, you wouldn't want, I don't want my grandkids coming, and I can't let them go outside and play, because I don't know who's next door.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come and speak on any topic?
I'm here again about the topic of the cut-through from the portside development to current village, and specifically the MOU that was entered into by the city, which reads at paragraph three. The city shall be responsible for the installation of a gate within thirty days of the completion of the connecting roadway, and all costs pertaining to the repair or replacement thereof. It's been over thirty days since that connection was made. Clearly over thirty days, there is no gate there. I heard some discussion of a chain. A chain is not a gate, and I have to tell you, I've, for thirty years, I've defended personal injury claims, and a chain is a horrible idea. I mean, you're really going to expose the city to some significant liability. And there have been serious injuries caused by chains that are stretched across paths and roadways and things like that. Don't do that. All right? Just keep your promises in the MOU. The traffic study's not done. The idea that, you know, you still haven't done the gate leads me to believe that you have no intention of doing the gate, which is unfortunate, because you've wasted my time, my neighbors' time, listening to us complain and complain and complain. Just do what you said you would do, and put in the gate. It's been thirty days since the cut-through was completed. Thank you.
Is there anybody else on this topic, or any other topic? Come forward, give us your name.
Just assuming I don't have to restate my, I might get it right this time. You'll sign me that information?
Absolutely.
Did the city, if I can ask a question, does the city have to say it's okay to collect data after school's out and after the agreed-upon period? Because they were collecting it over this past weekend.
I honestly don't know. The mayor isn't here, I, I don't know.
Okay.
I will look into that. Excuse me, I will look into that.
Thank you.
As far as that agreement itself, we'll find out tomorrow.
Thank you.
Hi.
Just give me a moment, okay? So I make a note here. I want to make sure I have all of it. Okay, thank you, go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening. W, Avon Lake, and along with the concerns that my, my neighbors have, have just indicated, I wanted to bring up the issue about the MOU and the TIS. You know, as council has heard over the past few months from my neighbors, from your constituents, that, that there is some serious concerns regarding the connection of Hanford Boulevard from Port, the Portside Development to current village. And a number of you on, on council have been working with us to enter into the MOU and into the TIS, and we appreciate it. We appreciate Councilman Shamir, Councilman Koz, and many of you who have worked with me and with my neighbors. And so then it was, it was with high hopes that the TIS, or the Traffic Impact Study, was entered into with Trans Systems. And we appreciate the city earmarking a significant amount of funds for that study. And really, it was to not only address the Hanford Boulevard cut-through, the connection, but also to get some much-needed data for the, the development of the portside and the development of southeast corner of Avon Lake, so that council can make its decisions in the future. So hopefully, it would provide some useful data, not only for this issue, but for many others. But from the start, there were plenty of red, there were unfortunately, plenty of red flags. Number one, we learned that Trans Systems was, there were many questions asking for the methodology and the metrics that would be used in collecting the data. Trans Systems agreement indicates that their report would, would share their methodology. And yet, when they were here at council, and the question was asked, they did not, they could not provide those metrics. They, they didn't share, apparently didn't share with council, because no one on council, and I know that the, the mayor had also, we had also asked him, and he did not have that information. So Trans System was less than transparent in terms of their methodology. It's not up to council to, to be an expert of everything. You're paying Trans Systems to provide that information to you, and they should respond. So they should give you the metrics, they should explain the methodology, so that you can explain to your constituents. So that was the first red flag. The second red flag was, we learned that there weren't, they didn't have enough cameras. And so even though their agreement indicated that they would be collecting the data, in their words, single weekday, so single Thursday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday was the agreement. But then, second red flag, they did not have enough cameras. And again, while I appreciate that, that council was trying to be empathetic to them, this is, this is what they do for work, this is their business, this is what they're being paid to do, and council needs to hold them accountable. And then we find out that the, that the original intent of the Traffic Impact Study was supposed to be during a school year. And due to a number of factors, it, it was not started until after the regular school year concluded. We, I discussed this at the CCM, this council well knows when it started. Again, it was up to Trans Systems to tell council, we can't, this is not appropriate, we can't give you the correct data for a school year because of the timing, we have to do this in the fall. It, it, it isn't, you know, like I said, council is not the expert of all. You've paid Trans Systems to provide this data, and they should have told you that, but they didn't. They were not transparent. And then, not only then, did their equipment fail, then they just unilaterally decided to put it up whenever they wanted, after school ended. This is a significant amount of money that the city of Avon Lake is paying Trans Systems. As your constituents, you represent us, and we ask that you hold Trans Systems accountable, and tell them that they need to do this correctly in the fall, and they need to do this at their cost. It, it is, it is their fault that they did not tell you they couldn't do this, that their equipment was failing, and that they could not comply with the terms of their agreement. The, the Trans System has breached their agreement with the city of Avon Lake, and as a constituent and as your neighbor, I ask that you please hold them accountable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Before I begin, I'd like to play a video, if I may, about the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Avon Lake.
No, it's not the topic matter, it's that we, citizens do not play videos, thank you.
It's not in any place in the charter that says I cannot do.
It doesn't need to be in the charter.
You just decide.
Sir?
You just decide.
Sir, today...
Just want to make sure, you decide.
Two-two-oh-point-oh-four, that's correct, sir.
Okay, you decide. Based upon my fellow citizens and what they've just said about the traffic study, one of the other factors that nobody's bringing up, is that the last two weeks of school, when they were supposedly doing this, is bike-to-school week. Parents aren't driving their children to school, they're biking, they're walking, they're doing other things in an attempt to get to school, not car transportation. So, I could talk about, the city put out a notice the other day that says they were concerned about the air quality from the smoke from the wildfires up in Canada. Which, I guess, may or may not cause a problem, I, I don't know how intense the smoke was. The part that I find interesting is that you'd be concerned about the smoke floating over from Canada to the United States, to Ohio. Yet, nobody did anything about the debris that was exploded and placed into the air December nineteenth. And that debris ended up at people's homes. But not a single one of you spoke up to say, something's happened here, this isn't good, this, this might be hazardous to your health. Hypocrisy, hypocrites. That's what you are. It's like when you're talking about procedures, and you're worried about taking the oath of office. Why take it? You guys break it routinely, religiously. You don't abide by what you've sworn to do, you just do what you want to do. Two very distinct things there. Concerned citizens, we'll be back on the air shortly. Stay with us. Gerald, I wish you well. Hope you have a speedy recovery. So we're finally moving ahead on the Ohio Supreme Court. My clock isn't running. Going to let me go for another four and a half minutes? Why not? Come on! Let's make it a party. It'll be like an Airbnb on James Circle. So again, I find it unusual that we're going to worry about smoke and not debris. And nobody did any, a single council... A single council person spoke up, till Mr. Shamir finally did, months later, weeks later, however long it was, but he was the only one. The mayor didn't come out and say anything about it, because he knew that it was illegal and wasn't a good idea to speak about. But he was worried about being sued by this ALERG bully that's out there. It's just ridiculous. I find such humor in something that's not funny at all. It's despicable how you people act. And these are the reasons you want to change the meetings, because you don't like when I come up and I say these things. These are facts. So I'd like to make a public records request on the meetings that were held between our illustrious law director and Amy Gentry in trying to get these ordinances for the demolition ordinance to be made. So that would be from August 29th, the first demolition, through to, let's say, today's So that I would have an idea on how much time really was spent when the law director was misleading her for months.
Would anybody else like to come up on any topic? Seeing none, is there any miscellaneous business from anyone? Seeing none, then we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
On favor, say aye.
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 See, we have to do a roll call. I thought I could do it easy. Mrs. Ross Maren. Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned, see you next week.